Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. We'll go by this clock, because it's two minutes faster. Everyone, if you would stand and is so inclined, face the flag while we say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You know Kurt, I think that was originally your drive to put the pledge on. That was a nice job. It just went years ago.
I think I'll come to the table and then...
Okay, next to the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or changes?
I do have an addition here. I'd like to go through with a resolution to fully fund special education services. This is a resolution that's been recommended by the MSBA, your organization. We were going to do this through Goodhue County Ed. District, but they're asking us now to do it individually so they can get more support.
Okay, and this is the document that you gave us here, the resolution?
That's correct. You have it on your desk.
Okay. So we will add that under new business, item four.
There's two of them. One state, one state.
One state, one state. So we enact them separately. Four and five. Anything in addition to that? I would look for an approval of the agenda with the amendments.
I make motion.
Motion by Kurt.
I'll second.
Seconded by Rob. Further discussion? All in favor of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Schedule presenters, Danielle Fields, Cannon Falls Crisis Plan.
Hi, thank you. So, part of the charge of one of my responsibilities here is to absorb the role of the safety coordinator. And so I looked at our school crisis plan and noticed that it had been a few years since it had been updated. So in order to update it, I did a few things. One is, I cross-checked our emergency, which was our existing emergency and crisis plan, with MDE guidelines to ensure that we had compliance. And then, two other pieces that I added to that is, I asked the building administrators to check and make sure that what was listed for their buildings was current. And I also shared it with our Cannon Falls Police Department Chief McCormick and asked him for his review and feedback on it. Upon doing those three things, I noticed that there were a few updates that needed to be made. And one of them was, at the end of our crisis plan, I've added building maps, and this is a suggestion by MDE. As a recommendation for crisis and safety plan is that we have building maps, so in case an emergency responder comes in, they have access to our building maps. And I updated our new emergency call tree at the beginning with all the current staff members. There was old staff members on there, so that now reflects who is here. I removed all information related to ALC, because that no longer exists in this district. I also changed some of the language to make it MDE compliant. For example, code blue and code red now reads as hard lockdown and soft lockdown. We use the words rather than the code. And then the last piece that I did with that is, I checked to make sure that the appendix resources that were listed in the back were accurate and current. So I did a cross-check of all of them to make sure that the numbers were correct, the resources that were there still existed. So, our emergency and crisis plan moving forward, the overall structure of it is the same. There wasn't any major changes, just rather some updates and tweaks to make sure that it's MDE compliant.
Where does the crisis plan go from here? Is that on our website at school, or is that something that we keep with admin?
You know, that's a great question. Right now, it's shared among admin. That might be a question for administration. How have we shared it in the past, and where is that located? Because right now, I have the current copy. It has not been shared with anyone yet, outside of admin.
Beth, did you hear that?
I did, and it will eventually get onto our webpage at some point. It really isn't critical. It's not a requirement by MDE. We're trying to stay ahead of everything, and Danielle's just done a great job with updating what we had. So, very pleased with her work.
Okay. Anything else, Tam?
We have a copy in each building office of the full crisis plan. And then the pieces that are pertinent to classrooms, every classroom has a, maybe we have one in this room, a clipboard that's got a flip chart of all the major issues that classroom teachers need to address, if they come up.
Is that something they review with all the kids in the class, or is this something that...
Pieces of it are, that's got our procedures for hard lockdowns and soft lockdowns, fire drills. But it's also got things on there for, you know, bomb threats, even because we're within 20 miles of the Prairie Island Nuclear Facility, or part of our district is, we have a nuclear emergency response plan and that kind of thing. Some of those things in there, we don't really want made public, just because they detail our plans for evacuating. And, you know, in a situation where we might have an active threat on campus somewhere, we don't want necessarily somebody to be able to access those.
Any other questions for Danielle?
Do we have a plan then for posting maps in the building, or is that what's here at the meeting? What are the maps?
The maps that I have are the maps that have been most recently updated with Dave Peterson. So he gave me those himself, and those are what's back there.
So I think those maps are in the classrooms, but they maybe weren't in the plan itself.
Correct. So those are now there, with updated group numbers.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Reports in communication. We have no student rep tonight. I didn't see his report in here, did anybody else? No advance? Okay. School board committee reports. I'll just open with finance. We will deal with finance later on in the agenda, so I think it's kind of redundant to speak to it now, unless you have something to say, Beth?
No, that's fine. Just leave it to the end.
Okay. Other committee reports?
Yeah, the staff development committee met. I wasn't able to go, but I had the notes and I read through them. Sounds like the mentor program is still going really well. K has been subbing in classrooms down in elementary schools so that teachers, who are the mentoring teachers, can go into other classrooms to observe. And they're thinking that might be a valuable thing to do in high school as well, for mentoring teachers. So I thought that was pretty neat. And then, both buildings, they're so on top of it, and they're so great at keeping up on all their staff development workshops and everything. So it looks like they're talking about possibly doing, looking into a Schoology workshop, and for tech, and for using more, getting it more, going even stronger. So, sounds good. And then I also have Goodhue County Ed. I had the first meeting. It was an organizational meeting. So, there wasn't too much to report, other than their solar gardens are still proving to be quite equitable. So they're receiving quite a bit of money on their solar gardens, so that was pretty neat to hear. And those numbers are still climbing. I think they said something like, they haven't had an energy bill. They've been able to absorb the energy bills, and they're still getting credits back. So, that's been going well for them. But otherwise, that was all they had to report.
Yeah, I think we got an invitation that's...
Yes, we have, yep. The dinner is coming up. It was March 21st.
Twenty-eighth?
I just got that in the mail.
Yeah.
Yeah, like, two days ago, so everyone should be knowing that one. And I'll make sure I bring that up at the...
Well, everyone should have gotten that.
Yep. I'll make sure I remind you. Okay.
Transportation, Matt, and talking about busing. Beth, $20,000 was the goal to reduce in transportation? Yep.
That was our, yep.
So, well, we took a kind of a little bit different approach, and I may have stepped on Beth a little bit there, sorry. We're kind of giving Andy the option to, how is he going to figure out how to hit that $20,000? And it might be a combination of buying, one of the issues that we've kind of found out is, there's three vans we're all bought in the same year. So they all come due exactly 12 years later. So we're going to possibly purchase used vans to start breaking those years up. So never will we need to buy three vans in one year. Plus the buses themselves, possibly looking at some used buses for a lower price. So again, when they run out, it'll be different timeframes. But, more to come on the busing. But yeah, they've been tasked with $20,000 reduction.
How old of a bus do you think you can get for what you're looking at? Any ideas?
Andy, they've got resources. Because that was one of the questions that Beth had, was really, you think you can, and you want to add in?
No, go ahead. You're doing a great job.
Yeah. Andy and, both him and the mechanic were like, nope, we think that we can find good buses. They have to be Minnesota qualified. They used to have to be manufactured for Minnesota. They don't have to anymore, but they think they can find some that have good years left for a very reasonable price. So, I know it's kind of delaying sometimes what could inevitably happen, these buses become more money pits, but we're looking to save $20,000.
When Andy and I have gone through it, his goal is to find two used buses that can get us three years of use, and that puts us back on schedule. So we're rotating on this, essentially every 15 years, they'll get nothing past that. So, it may be an eight to 10 or 12-year-old bus, but the goal is to get it to last three years, to get us back on a schedule where we stay more consistent with the expenditure.
Any other committees?
Facilities, Matt. We're looking at the activity building and building use setup, especially designated eating areas. A lot of other districts have that when they go to their sporting events. So not everything is drug into the fieldhouse or the gymnasium, or into the bathrooms or hallways and everywhere else. We're in the process of reviewing, rental review. Trying to make a decision what needs to happen there, if anything. I'm going to make the assumption that rental is probably going to be going up for our facility for outside activities, other than school activities. They're working on an issued key policy for next school year. And then there's, we're in the process of discussing lawn care and snow removal, so it's a review meeting, basically. There's a lot of different items that need to be reviewed and taken a look at, so that's really all that meeting entitled. More so the designated eating area, it's becoming an issue with food being thrown everywhere and other items. But, that's all in the facility, unless you have something to add?
No, no. You're doing well. Negotiations?
We had, we met with the media last Tuesday. We made a final offer to the teachers. They are taking their final vote today, and I guess one more after today. I don't have any update on anything yet.
Any other committees?
Correct. The committee was supposed to meet before this meeting, but it's been moved to March, so that'll be in March.
Correct. Thank you.
Gosh, busy committees. Anyone else? Okay, moving down to administrative board reports. Elementary school. Jen, you gave us something here already.
Yep.
Color photos in the works. Nice job. Would you like to comment anymore, in which case?
No, just kind of recapping our author night that we had. It was great. It was last Thursday. We had seen over, about 100 families, or, you know, with their students and whatnot, so about 100 total. And I just want to reach out to the literacy team and say thank you for their work with that, especially to Lori Turner, who will have taken charge with writing the grant for that as always, so.
Okay, middle high school?
Yeah, sorry, didn't get to report to you. Just some highlights. We finished our preliminary run-through registrations of high school students last Friday, so I've started sifting through those numbers, and I'll have more report to our administrative team about recommendations for numbers of sections of high school classes coming up with that. We've got our fourth or fifth annual, and I don't remember, I should know which one this is. I think it's our fourth annual job fair coming up on Thursday this week. So, we've got businesses from around the community that come and set up little areas in the atrium during lunches, and our kids have an opportunity to go and pick up, you know, literature about what those places have to offer, and a lot of kids make connections for summer work through that. So, that's a really good thing coming up here. Thanks to Deb Clegg and for all the work on that. We've had some great success with some of our activities recently. I'm sure you've heard that our dance is going to state again. So, High Kick is going to state on, Jake, yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Is going to state on Saturday. Let's see, our one-act play did really well at sectionals a couple of weeks ago. Just had a middle school dance on Saturday. We've got our high school dance since our last board meeting. Just a lot of stuff going on, and a lot of activities going on right now, so.
Our schools are full. We've been on the weekend, aren't they?
Oh, yes, they are. Yes, they are.
That's a good thing. Okay?
Aside from what I have included in your packet, I also wanted to publicly congratulate the dance team. Sixteen straight years in High Kick, they qualified for state, so unbelievable accomplishment for that team. Also want to congratulate, it's the new packet, but I wanted to do it publicly. Graham Pearson and Sophie Upster's chosen as state Excel Award winners. There's only 36 statewide, regardless of school size, and we have two of them, so great award. A couple of years ago, we had a couple winners too, but...
His brother?
Yep. Yeah, Graham's older brother was also one of them too, so. Carlton Lindell won it a couple of years ago, so. Had a lot of success with that program.
I want to thank you, Jake, too. I know some of these Saturdays can be tough for you, and it's nice to see them all day at the competition representing the district and handing out their awards. It's really nice.
Thanks, Greg.
Dave Peterson isn't here, so we'll move down to technology. Amy, you gave us a printout. Would you like to...
Yeah, I'll just do a quick summary. So we've been working with Ms. Fields, getting ready for testing, if you can believe that. We did a couple run-throughs with our new fast bridge, which is kind of our progress monitoring program, just to see how that would go with the iPads and also having students test in classrooms. And that's actually pretty good. And so from that, we're kind of making some decisions about what that's going to look like with MCA testing, and so it's been kind of a good thing to do. And if you can believe it, we're already planning for summer, and starting to make some decisions about technology programming purchases and things like that, which we'll be talking about at the next tech committee meeting, which is a week from Thursday on the February 22nd. At that meeting in particular, we're going to look at the tech plan. That's no longer required by the state, but we're going to do it. We're going to continue to do that, because it'll just be a good document to help us plan for, kind of see where we've been. I'm going to add a couple of things that haven't been there in the past. See where we've been, look at where we currently are at, and then start to make projections three years out, and making plans that way to help kind of inform the committee, the new teachers coming on the committee. Just kind of have that as kind of an informative piece. And I'd just like to give a shout-out to both Sandy Sherrett and Dorothy O'Reilly, who've been helping me in doing a lot of cleanup with Active Directory, with our Schoology licenses and things like that. We've been going through and doing a lot of cleanup, just student accounts, parent accounts, phone numbers, emails, making sure that people are rostered in the right place and all that. And that's been really good to do that. On top of, Sandy's been very instrumental, and we'll be revealing that, maybe not next month, but maybe in a couple of months. We're going to do, we've done a district website redesign, and I think you'll kind of like some of the things that we've done. One of which is, it's going to be a lot more user-friendly on a mobile device. When you call up our district website on a smartphone, it's going to be a lot, much, much, much easier to kind of navigate through. So, we're kind of excited about that and revealing that as well, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Beth, Sue's report, anything?
Hi, I just want to let you know why I'm here. You're probably, some of you are wondering why I'm coming to you through Skype. I am actually finishing up that two-year program that I started two years ago. I presented my capstone this morning, so it's all done. Lori watched me carry out these three huge binders and was able to get up. And I will be graduating on Thursday with a national certification. And what that does for our school is allows us to apply for federal grants. A lot of times, I go in and I write a grant, and because we don't have a high enough pre-reduced population, or we don't have a high enough minority population, we get looked over for a lot of our grants. And so the next step is to go and look for federal grants. To do that, you need to be certified. And so there's only 3% of superintendents in the school districts that are certified, and as of Thursday, we will have that. And so I'm really excited, because I'm hoping that we can recoup more and more money through grant writing. Obviously, there's things out there. We just need to be able to be able to do that, so. I will do my best to represent Cannon Falls well on Thursday, and I'm really excited to graduate. So I think it's going to be a good thing for our district.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Yes. Thank you. I don't think she can hear us.
See that?
This is an opportunity to speak to anything of disparate concern that anyone from the public may have. We have three to five minutes. Anyone? Moving forward, old business. Consideration to approve the finance report. This is from the January 22 meeting that got postponed. Josh?
Yep, so you'll see, it is a capital worksheet, and a couple things to note on there. The balance is on the top, the emergency checking on the US bank. You'll see nearly $17 million with the funds. And the important part to remember of that is, $15 million of that was due to refunding of the 2007A and the 2008A debt service bonds. Those have been paid off now at the end of January, so this will be updated at the next board meeting. But the important part about the refunding is, the savings to the district in taxpayer terms is for the debt service reduction. So, between the two refundings, about $600,000 or so dollars will save over the next 10 years. Doesn't go into general fund. It's not something we can spend additional in our district, but it lowers the tax burden to our taxpayers in terms of what we need to pay back for our debt service. So those payments were made, and you'll see a significant reduction in cash flow towards the end of the month, about $1.4 million in cash. And that's sufficient to keep us in operation and not have to go for anticipation borrowing. And that is the case throughout the rest of the fiscal year. And again, that's the cash fund balance, not the general fund or the fund balance. If there are any questions on this, I can certainly do my best to answer. Next month you'll see, or not next month, the next board meeting, you'll see revised budget for fiscal year 18, so it'll be a much more in-depth financial report in the next meeting. But certainly can answer whatever you have now on this one.
Just so I'm clear on debt...
Yep.
On debt service, kind of like refinancing my home, right?
Correct. So, more favorable interest rate for us. The term stays the same. It was a 20-year loan to begin with. We were able to refund it at year 10, so in the next 10 years, it's about $60,000, $70,000 savings to the taxpayer each year. So, not as significant when it's spread out over everybody, but a reduction in the tax payment for each individual homeowner. Again, it's not money that goes into the classroom or general fund, but into our debt service. So, while it doesn't benefit maybe the school district in terms of what we can do to run the operations, definitely a savings to our taxpayers, which is always beneficial.
Any questions for Josh? If not, I'd like for a motion to approve. Motion by Jerry. Second?
A second.
Seconded by Katie. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? We are carried. Consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted in one motion. In the event a board member wants to discuss any singular item, it'll be removed for separate action. If you had an opportunity to look at our past minutes, new personnel items, changes, monthly bills. If not, just take a minute to take a look.
I would like to point to a couple donations that came in that I think are significant to at least acknowledge. On the Cannon Falls Youth Baseball, donated $1,200 towards the batting cage for Frank Cox Field. We're just so extremely thankful for that. And the other really big one is the River County Co-op. They donated $1,750 to our FFA program. And if you've seen the success, you know, I know Tim and Jake kind of mentioned a few things, but we have two groups going to state competition for FFA. And I know one of them is Fish and Wildlife, and another one is, oh, someone's going to have to help me out, but pretty remarkable that we've got 10 kids going to state in FFA as well, so, great program.
There really have been some significant contributions. BMW for $3,000 for tennis courts, $4,200 from the band boosters for two new tubas. Shepherd Center, $645 for sound system improvements in the auditorium. The youth baseball, which Beth has acknowledged. Star Tech gave $200 to our robotics group. An anonymous donor for tennis courts of $250. And both the River County Co-op and the Land of Lakes, which contributed $2,000 in total toward FFA, so, very nice.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Kurt.
I'll second.
Seconded by Rob. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve the 1718 spring head coaches. You'll find that in your attachments.
Is there just one change of coaches this year?
Yep, just one, and go.
Very nice to see Sue come back to us in some way, shape, or form.
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead, Katie.
I'll make a motion to approve this.
Katie Locklear made the motion. Jerry seconded for the approval of the spring head coaches. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve the Region 5 joint powers revision suggestions.
Yeah, this has actually not been updated since 1995. The region, we use this completely for our smart finances, our payroll system. This is a very, very important part in the area of finance for the school district. They didn't change any fees or anything like that, but they changed some of the outlines. If you want me to walk through any part of the resolution, I can certainly do that. But it has been reviewed by legal counsel and very acceptable and recommended by me to have you go ahead with this resolution. The changes are also, you can see the things that have been added, if you look at the document.
We can make a motion in a second, and then open it up for more discussion if you'd like. Right now, I'd be looking for consideration to approve the revision suggestion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Kurt.
I'll second.
Seconded by Rob. Okay, other discussion? All in favor of the revision, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Review the Finance Committee's recommendation for 1718 reductions.
I'm going to have you go back one step. That was a resolution.
Sure, sure it was.
We need that resolution format, please.
Sure it was.
That doesn't say resolution on the document, does it? It's written as...
Smart people, you know. Can we do that? Where are you going to read from?
You can probably just read that underlined section on page 17.
Okay. So we're voting on the resolution, whereas Minnesota Statute Section 123A.23 authorizes the member districts to organize pursuant to Minnesota Statutes Section 471.59 to provide computer services to school districts. Katie?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Brenda, yes. Rob?
Yes.
That passes 6-0. Thank you for bailing me out. Review of the Finance Committee's recommendations for 1718. This is a discussion item, so included in this is timeline and reductions in fund balance. We met, what, about three weeks ago, a month ago? And I guess our one and only agenda item at that time was, discuss the possibility of reductions. Would you like to jump in, or...
A lot of it was based off of where we wanted to be with the general fund, you know. I think our audit showed, can't remember, Beth, but I think the bottom line was, it came through like 6.8 in the general fund when it all came through, that right, 6.7 something? The Finance Committee kind of came to an agreement that we'd like to see it at 9.5%. If you ask the auditors, they'd like to see more than that. If you ask the auditors, they'd like to see more than that, they'd like to see, what is it, three months of?
Maybe like 18%, but I don't know many school districts that get there.
But 16 would be their, their wish. So it's 16. So we, we thought 9.5 would be realistic. So based on that, coming across to it, and are we going to go over that a little bit? Is that, put it down the line in the meeting here, is that coming up? How does the look yet with that?
I was just going to say, page 24 is the document that I presented to the Finance Committee. And they, it seemed pretty unanimous that they are, our goal is to get to 9.5%. And if you look at page 24, and that puts you at $291,000. There was some discussion of, you know, the kindergarten class, if we, if we do get more than we think are coming, that would help that number out a little bit. But until kindergarten roundup happens, we just don't know for sure.
We thought this would be a realistic goal. It is a budget, and you know that budgets do vary, and they do move from side to side, place to place, but right now, that's what we're going to try and shoot for, and depending on if there's an agreement amongst the board as well.
You know, in our, in our discussion, I think, we talk about what should be proper for a district to have, and they're talking about, you know, it would be ideal if they had double digits in their, in their budget, but it doesn't seem real to what most schools have, I think. I, I, you don't want to sound alarmist when we've got 7% and their, their projections would be much higher than they'd hope for, but we're the norm, aren't we?
We really are.
So I, we need to make that statement, we'd love to be at 12 or 14%, but it's just not where districts are these days. So Beth, would you like to review this, this timeline at all, or is it pretty self-explanatory, or?
This is the same timeline that you've seen the last few years. I did send this out to the staff as well, asking for some ideas. I did get two people that responded with some, some really, actually some really good ideas, especially on the revenue side. I mean, obviously, that's what we're always looking for instead of reductions, is some way to bring in revenue. But we are a school district, a little hard, it's not like we have a product we can sell or something like that. But I did put, attach the same timeline that they've seen. We'll make good practice of making sure that we talk about all items first before we do any voting. It's really, really vital that you guys understand what you're actually looking at, instead of just talking about it and voting on it the same night. So we'll wait, high school registration is done, Tim has got to move a few things around. February 26th, we'll have kindergarten roundup, and that will really be a good indicator of where we are. Then February 28th, your next board meeting is kind of a question-answer session. If you go ahead with the goal of 9.5% to be our goal, then the administrative team will sit down and we will start looking at areas that we can reduce. There are some, some items that have been already talked about a little bit, but until we know what the board wants to do, we're not sure where we want to go. So that next board meeting, you'll see the first round, we'll have a lot of questions and answers. I'll encourage our staff to come and be a part of that process, so that everyone is really well informed. Then you'll go the next week, that'll give you two weeks to talk to teachers, talk to staff, the administrators, the community. And then we'll look at that first round of things that we might want to reduce. And then we still give ourselves time on March 26th to maybe discuss any remaining items. Maybe we'll get us some more kindergartners that come in and we can reduce that number a little bit. There's always that possibility. So I think the timeline is very similar to what you've seen in the past. So if you have any questions on it, I can try to help.
The kindergarten roundup is the 26th. Is our meeting going to be on Monday or Wednesday then? Because the 28th is a Wednesday. Are we moving the meeting, or is it both the 26th, or is it reversed?
Oh, I might, I must have a mistake on there, Rob.
Yep.
Is it, okay, so we're meeting on Monday?
It'll be the 26th.
On this part.
Cool.
Our meeting will be the 26th.
Okay, cool. Okay, so we're just going to have one kind of round of?
Yes.
Okay.
You know, if, if you go from the recommendation of the Finance Committee, that really, that is kind of a one-round kind of thing. We certainly don't want to cut so deep that we're, we're losing programs or anything like that. So our goal will be to try to stay wherever you guys tell us to be.
Good.
And then again, what's the unanimous Finance Committee recommendation, right? Okay? So anything more? Okay.
I think, I think it would be wise to, the 9.5% is $291,000, just so that that can be documented in your notes. So if, you know, there's no vote on this or anything tonight, but if you do want to move forward with the Finance Committee's recommendation, that is $291,000 you're asking admin to find.
All right.
Do you need something from us tonight, to say go there, or not?
I think it's just information more than anything, the Finance Committee did recommend the 291.
Does that have to be approved by the board, or is that?
Well, it's a moving target. Because the Finance Committee recommended 9.5, do we have to give administration the direction to say yes, shoot for 9.5, and they come back to us with it, or how?
I'm thinking that we make that, that's all an implied recommendation, that we're not voting to accept 291. We're voting to, we're not even voting, we're just moving in that direction. And if they, and if they have something, we've had these very open discussions in the past. We started at 400, we ended up at 290. They'll bring in recommendations that might even be more than 291, and then we can filter out what we think is best. Possibly?
I don't think we're going to sign more than 291, but we'll do our very best.
All right.
Optimism.
Well, I don't think we're looking for any voting recommendation at this point in time.
No, I, I just think, it, just like everything else, your transportation committee recommendations, you know, Rob would bring forward that we're recommending to buy a bus or something like that. This is exactly the same thing, it's a recommendation. The administrative team and the, you know, the, everyone will work really hard to find that. We'll bring back the best that we can do, and then you'll need to make some tough decisions from there.
Sure. Okay?
Anything else?
Moving on, resolution of the special ed.
Services.
Services. This is the federal one, right?
Well, they're both the state and the federal.
Well, we got to move one at a time here, so you have the same job times two.
Okay, we'll do the resolution to fully fund special education services for Minnesota. Oh, you need a motion.
Can we, can we know exactly what we're doing here?
Um, I, I would add a little bit too. As we've talked about in the past, special education, the cross subsidy right now for our district is $624,000. And what that means is, that's what we're spending in special education. Hi, Tim. What are you doing? With special education, our. All right, I'll talk to Mr. Williams. Oh, I'm getting feedback on.
Yeah, you're getting blanked out.
Anyway, we're 24,000 cross subsidy funding that we have not been paid for by the state. And so your organization, MSBA, is trying really hard to work at the legislative level to get this through, that all special education funding needs to be paid for. Whether that's transportation or special accommodations. Currently, we pay for anything that any school, even if a child doesn't go to our district, we pay for it. And so your organization is working really, really hard on trying to get this funded. I think this is a great effort, I think it's going to be really hard to get it through, because a small little Cannon Falls, it's at $624,000, you know what St. Paul at. I don't know where they find those funds to completely fund special education. But the two resolutions you see in front of you are just that. They are requesting that the state pay for every penny of special education. If that happened for us, we could do some really great things for the entire school district, so it would be great. My recommendation is to move forward with this resolution. I don't know if it's going to go anywhere, but I think, I think by having every district send this in, it's really a powerful message to our legislators.
Okay?
Need a motion?
We'll have a motion on the special ed resolution for federal.
I'll make the motion.
A second.
Brenda on the motion.
Kurt.
Kurt on the second. Okay. Read away.
Yep.
Resolution to fully fund special education services, federal. Whereas local boards of education place a very high priority on ensuring that all students receive high-quality special education programs and instruction. Now therefore be it resolved. Should I read all three of those? That we urge the president and legislature to strenuously advocate for significant increases in federal special education funding and meaningful special education reforms at the federal and state levels. And now therefore be it resolved that the state of Minnesota calls upon the Congress of the United States to pass appropriate legislation in order to increase funding for federal and special education mandates to meet the urgent financial special education needs of our cities and towns. Be it further resolved that the Secretary of the State cause a copy of this resolution to be delivered to all United States representatives and senators representing Minnesota in the Congress of the United States.
Yes, vote to be the acceptance of this resolution.
Okay, so Rob?
Yes.
Brenda, yes. Bob?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Okay, that passes by a 6-0 vote. Likewise, we also need a resolution to fully fund the special ed services for Minnesota.
I'll make a motion to accept the resolution.
Motion by Rob, seconded by Katie. Other discussion?
Read your thing.
This is a resolution to fully fund special education services in Minnesota. Whereas local boards of education place a very high priority on ensuring that all students receive high-quality special education programs and instruction. Now therefore be it resolved that the Cannon Falls area schools urge the governor and legislature to strenuously advocate for significant increases in federal special education funding and meaningful special education reforms at the federal and state levels. And now therefore be it resolved that this is an urgency, the Minnesota legislature, that there is an urgency, Minnesota legislature to convene a task to work on special education funding, especially with a focus on the impacts of the new special education funding formulas, the projected cross subsidy and recommendations, with the timeline to eliminate the cross subsidy. Start on the other end, Katie?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes. Bob? Yes.
Brenda, yes. Rob?
Yes.
That passes by 6-0 vote. This is so every school district in the state stands behind this. Chances are, it doesn't have a lot of teeth to it, but at least they'll know we're all united in what we're doing.
That's, that's the point, if they get 339 school districts to sign this, if they believe that, with the numbers, that will help their cause. I think it's a good thing to sign, I just don't know if it'll ever happen. We can hope.
You know, Grant came in at the nick of time.
Yes.
Right before our informational items, which is the last thing on our agenda, so.
Perfect.
It was perfect.
Yep, Math League was running nine minutes late, so I hustled over here as fast as possible.
Why don't you tell us what's going on in the world of students in Cannon Falls?
Sounds good. Well, to start off with Math League, we got third this year. Bummer, we usually get second for the past five years, so that'll be good for next year's going forward, you know, we got some room to improve. Girls Dance is going to state this Friday, and right now, they're currently ranked third in the state, but they look like they can do a good job trying to get second or first as well. The robotics program, just spend a little bit of time on that. The build season is wrapping up, we have 10 days and like two hours left before we have to be finished building. And we have our first kind of practice event this Saturday, going over to Eagan and testing out the robot on the components. Speech has their second tournament, and now they're going to Farmington. And so now they're done with novice season, and now it's on to varsity season. The Lantern just got one or two journalism awards, and Snow, which is the organization that the Lantern is under, and so that's two out of six, so they're still working on that. And then sports are, sports through the mid-season, and then they're slowly getting ready to go for, you know, towards the end season, so that's what we got.
Thank you for coming and making that effort.
No problem.
Steve, Bob, I do have one last thing before you close.
Absolutely.
I want everyone to know that it's National School Board Week, and that's from February 19th to 23rd. And so Lori is going to come over to you with something from me, and then she's got desserts and treats afterwards. So we just really want to thank you for all your hard work and everything that you do. Sorry I can't be there, but congratulations on your special week.
Thank you.
Thanks, Beth.
Thank you.
I wonder why we're making coffee.
Could be kneecap, so we're all in good shape here.
It's our regular kneecap.
Thank you for that. Okay, informational items. Things that are coming up at our next board meeting will be the approval of the spring, assistant springs, mid-year presentation, approval of the fiscal year revised budget. And anything else that needs to get brought forward that you feel, just check with Beth or Lori, and we'll see what we can get done. As we close, any, any additional info that you'd like to share as board members? Okay. Folks, your favorite time, how do you look for a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
A second.
Brenda moves to adjourn. Jerry? Jerry on the second?
We can remove this down.
Any other discussion? All in favor of closing, say aye.
Aye.